Welcome everyone to the Thursday, February 18th, 2021, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. In accordance with executive order N dash 29 dash 20, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually.
Say Alan, we're having some.
Cannot hardly hear you.
My mic isn't picking up? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Uh, I, yeah, I can hear you, but it's pretty soft. It's softer than usual.
I can barely hear either of you.
Does that sound any better? How about that?
That's a little better. Can you do it a little bit more?
I can barely hear them.
Yeah, you turned yourself down a bit. Put it all the way up there. Oh, no, yeah, not your, your sound, just your mic. This is your mic. This is your speaker.
Which one do you want me to?
So, mic only, speaker halfway.
I can't hear at all.
We're still working on technical difficulties.
Is that any better? All right. I apologize.
Very faint.
I'm not exactly sure what's going on. Sorry about that. So, uh, to join us, go to the county website under the Planning Commission. It'll give you instructions to join us either on the computer or by telephone. And with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States. One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Like an echo. All right. I will ask for a roll call, Laura.
Commissioner Alan Bongio.
Present.
Thomas Mulder. Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neill.
Here.
Brian Mitchell.
Brian's here.
Melanie McCaver.
We have a quorum. Five out of seven are with us tonight. All right. Okay. So, Thomas just joined us, so we actually have six commissioners. All right. Any agenda modifications, Director?
There are no modifications. There are several supplementals, and those are reflected. They can be viewed on the Legis使ar website.
Thank you. And now we'll have a public comment. This is the time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. So, I will get over to attendees. And the first caller is Paul Jacobson. Go ahead, Paul.
Well, it's actually Sue, but we're both going to be using the same computer, so he'll.
I got you.
Later too. Anyway, this is a, just a general comment. Recently, I've had reason to research the requirements for cultivation under the 2.0 cannabis cultivation ordinance. The requirement for no diversionary water to be used is problematic. The intent of the requirement seems to stem from a desire to protect the rivers and other surface waters from depletion by taking too much out for cannabis farming, an admirable goal. The other option allowed under this law is to pump water from a non-diversionary groundwater well. My research indicates that the geology of our county, such groundwater doesn't exist. My research also indicates, let's see, what I've done leads me to believe that this area doesn't have confined aquifers on bedrock. Even in arid western states that do have such geology, wells have caused unforeseen disastrous consequences. You all have read of areas where the soil collapses after years of depletion from pumping out the groundwater. Groundwater must be replenished by precipitation at a rate equal or greater than, than it's being pumped out, or the aquifer will fail. This ordinance has created the need for many new wells to be drilled in our steep, fragile geological terrain. It may take years for the consequences to become apparent. The first results will be drying of the streams and creeks immediately around the wells. This affects the humans and wildlife in the area closest to the wells. I have heard this is already happening here in Southern Humboldt. Next, the rivers will shrink. We already have had this experience due to drought in the Motol and the Eel River near Riedel. As the hillsides lose their subsurface water, they will begin to erode. The trees and plants will dry out and die, bringing the danger of wildfire to greater intensity. It seems to me the ordinance meant to preserve the environment and the rivers by limiting the water to non-diversionary sources. Then, the answer is not to allow wells just by calling them non-diversionary. Uphold the intention of the ordinance and restrict the size of the farms by what the environment can actually support. It might be good to amend 2.0 to a more like the original ordinance, which allows diversion in the winter months. That would help to protect our countryside from the threat we now face from the withdrawal of groundwater.
You're gonna have to wrap it up. You have 10 seconds.
That's it, I'm done.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't give you more time.
Oh, no, that's, that's perfect.
More warning that you're up, I meant. Thank you. Uh, the next caller is Kent.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I would like to echo what that prior speaker was saying. I see so many of the wells in all these permits here. I also, and that's why some of them will be pulled tonight, I also see, don't we, we're really not getting consistently information on these agendized items. And I don't know, you guys may have time to read 42 pages on a seven projects or whatever we have. I don't. And I think before it's been requested that some of that information, we put the place to have that consistently have a consistent format is, and the items are agended. Some of the items are agendized twice as long as other ones, and the more information I think the better, rather than having us, have me pull these off and go digging for the information during the staff reports. The consequences of all these wells pumping on and on was explained, I think, quite accurately by the prior speaker. And, uh, I personally see the only, and the questions I'm going to have on all these wells, unless it specifically says, this well is only to be taken during, uh, forbearance times. Uh, some of these projects have next to no storage, and yet they have large requirements for water on the few that are actually noted here. So, these questions I will be asking, and I will continue to do so. And we'll also deal with generators today during the, during the zoning administrator hearing. I think just about every single one had a good response regarding either getting rid of their generators or moving that direction, maybe even to Project Trellis, one of them was. So, stay up to your speaker.
Thank you, Kent. Any other speakers that would like to speak on public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment section, and we will move on to the consent agenda. And I, as usual, will go through the list of items on the consent agenda and ask if any of those are to be pulled by the commission or the public. So, the first item on the consent agenda is Greengrass Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bell Springs Road area, the New Harris. Does anybody want this item pulled? I see Kent. Pulled it, so that item will be pulled. Item number two is Crisp Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Grouse Creek area. Does anybody wish to have this item pulled? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Item number three, Peachtree Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the State Highway 36 Dinsmore area. I see a hand up from both the panel and Kent, so we'll pull that one. Item number four, Armco Two LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit on Patterson Road in the Willow Creek area. Anybody wish to have these pulled? I see Kent wants this one pulled. And item number five is the BB Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the, uh, Willow Creek area. Does anybody care to have this one pulled? Kent? Yeah. All right. And item number six is the Rising Sun Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Redwood Valley area. Does anybody wish to have this one pulled? I see your hand up, Kent, but I'm not sure if that, is that it for this one, or is that left up from last time? I didn't see it go down, so. It did, okay, so I'm gonna, the director says it did, so I'm going to pull this one. So, we have, I think, one item that wasn't pulled. Uh, item number two was not pulled on, from consent, so I would ask if I could get a motion to approve that one item. Item number two, Crisp Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit on the consent.
I would, I would, uh, move approval of Crisp Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion in a second. I believe that was Melanie that was the second, and. Yep. All right. Any discussion? Not, I'll ask Laura for the vote.
Commissioner Bongio.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McCaver.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. So now, we will address the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. And I'm gonna go through these one at a time, and I'm gonna ask if there was just, uh, one person that, uh, pulled this, and I wrote down if there was more each time. So, like on item number one, uh, the Greengrass Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit. In order to, to try and expedite things, if, if that person, Kent, would, um, I'm gonna open it up to him and ask him if there's a, a question that he could add, needs answered, that would allow us to, to move faster than having a full staff report and everything on this, because no commissioner's asked to have this pulled. I'm just trying to, to find a way to make these meetings go a little bit faster. So, Ken, I'm gonna open it up to you on this and let you ask a question, staff or us, and then maybe we can just move, move on to the next one and get these out quicker.
Hope we can. I would like, um, if I had been able to get ahold of staff, I give them a request that when these are agendized, that whoever's handling this, we don't have to dive into the report. I could have called staff people and possibly got this answered, or if I had a callback from other staff members, we might not be here pulling any of these. So, I did have, uh, this, this particular one didn't have any water usage spelled out. Uh, it lists two generators. I couldn't tell how many crops. A lot of times they say how many crops. We, we have a, a building here, and, and I could see, you know, something of this nature. Is that building gonna be used for the catchment? That's a proposed building, and that might, a catchment process might eliminate two springs being for diversion and one well permitted. So, I just really would wish that, uh, a condition on this one would be at such time as they develop this, uh, 30 by 60 foot processing building. They do that for a catchment process, and they have either, uh, either the pond to handle that, or some kind of a storage system, and so that we can eliminate, uh, any kind of well or spring diversions, especially during the, uh, forbearance time period. And again, it would be nice if that was set here, that they will be forbearing their water and, uh, trying to use these other things. It'd also be nice to get rid of the generators and phase those into a two-year kind of a program for those things. But I guess maybe I'm just, uh, kind of, I guess that's just one of my problems with all these generators we have on this particular day. Thank you for opportunity.
Thank you. I don't think there was any direct questions for staff unless the director'd like to answer anything there, so. Okay. So then we'll go to item number. Yes. There is no other problem. Okay. So, if the applicant on this, uh, project would like to speak, I'd open it up right now to them. This is the applicant here. Jeff, go ahead, Jeff, if you're, if you're the representative for the applicant.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, thank you for, uh, planning commission. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to state that, yeah, there is the water source, I mean, obviously, as a condition of the order, as a, a requirement of the ordinance, that they would be forbearance for any, surface water diversion. They're trying to, convert off the, the surface water by drilling a well, I believe the well. I don't think any rain catchment is contemplated here, and I, I don't believe that that would be an appropriate condition. But then it given the water usage and the property that have been developed. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Jeff? Any other app, any other representatives of the applicant or the applicant that would like to speak here? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment side of this and bring it back to the panel. I see we have one hand up to the commission and Thomas. Go ahead.
So, on this one, I had emailed a couple of questions, and mainly my questions, uh, Megan answered all of those, and then there was a revised possible condition of approval on number 17. I don't know if it would be appropriate to ask her to read that language. The long story short, it would basically, the applicant would process offsite until they were able to have a permitted, uh, processing facility, rather than condition 17. Right now, says that they would have to amend their operations plan, which seems like undue burden on an applicant. And, uh, the language she had emailed me earlier today, I felt, would take care of that undue burden on an applicant.
Uh, yes, if I may, um, the, the suggested revised language, um, that I sent to Commissioner Mulder, um, earlier today for condition number 17 is the applicant shall process at an offsite licensed processing facility until the onsite processing structure is permitted by the building department, which includes a sign-off of the onsite wastewater treatment system by, uh, the Department of Environmental Health. And a sign-off, you know, ultimately, all of that is handled through the building department. So, a sign-off from the building department would satisfy the condition? That's a proposed revision to what is stated on condition number 17.
Got you. Thank you. Mike, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public knows what is being spoken of there, and is number 17 on page 18 of the staff report, of the report here, which is, um, if the applicant is unable to permit the proposed onsite processing facility? That language?
Yes, it is. That is just to clarify. When offsite should happen versus onsite.
And the proposal is, proposal is to work offsite on processing until the building is ready onsite, is that correct?
Yes, until it meets the standards, um, the required standards, uh, for the county. Have, providing the revised condition, um, would then apply to the project and not require, um, the applicant to go redo the operations plan to address Commissioner Mulder's concern of undue burden.
Wasn't there another, um, question that, um, Kent had asked about some water and, and plant numbers?
I, what I had heard from the public comment, uh, was a suggestion to move to perhaps, uh, develop rainwater catchment to support water for irrigation, to move off the use of the springs.
Can I answer your question, Mike?
Well, is there anything about the number of plants? Or is it just the acreage? Square feet?
I think he, um, and he may have also referred to the number of harvests being proposed to, by the applicant, but I'm, I'm clear if there was a comment on the cultivation area.
And there is how many?
Be able to help on this, he has.
Commissioner Newman, I, as I recall, the question had to do with the fact that the project description did not include the amount of water that's used or where the water storage is located. And in the staff report, there is a rather robust, robust discussion of the water usage, um, the rainwater catchment, the tanks, the, uh, the, um, the pond. And so there is sufficient water. Um, there is more storage onsite than there will be water usage.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I see you have your hand up, no.
Um, yeah, I, I actually just wanted to chime in to, to say that I, I think Director Ford just, um, explained that there's, there's quite a bit of discussion of water in this, and I, I guess I do take issue with, um, Mr. Sawatsky, although I understand he is trying to improve these projects, but in many, if not most, of the cases that he has pulled, it seems that the questions and concerns he has are actually well-explained and usually addressed pretty well in the staff report. And so, what I heard from the comment today was that he was pulling all of these, or a number of these items, because he wasn't finding certain information on the agenda. You know, the agenda didn't tell him how much water per use per plant per cycle, or, or something to that effect. And I, and I frankly am a little annoyed, because it seems to me that he didn't have any substantive concerns about this one, and the concerns that he raised would have been addressed had he read the staff report. Now, perhaps I am misunderstanding and misconstruing his, um, objections, but, you know, I have a process objection to that, to him pulling items and having things explained and discussed that in fact were addressed in the staff report, when it seems to me that we've all bothered to take a look at those staff reports. He should, if he's going to pull them, he should have taken a look at them as well. Thank you very much.
Stella, um, Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, I just am confused on the project, the question of the project description as far as, uh, water usage, because it clearly states in the project description that I had mailed to me that it's water usage is 126,850 gallons or 9.9 gallons per square foot. I don't know that the applicant outdoor and two runs of sun-grown light depth is very similar water usage as a cultivator. If you're just, so I, I'm confused on, I mean, it's pretty similar. It's outdoor under county code, so it's whether it's light depth or full-term outdoor, the water usage is going to be pretty similar. So, I'm confused. From the documents I read in the project description, I was pretty clear on what the water usage was going to be. With that, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve, uh, the Greengrass Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit with changing the language in condition of approval number 17, as, uh, Megan Ryan stated into the record. Um, make all the required findings and find the project exempt from CEQA. I think there's that.
I would second that.
We have a motion in a second, and I see Melanie has her hand up, so we'll have some further discussion on this. So, go ahead, Melanie.
Oh, it was just a comment, um, on what Commissioner Levy brought up. My understanding from, uh, what was said during the public comment when these were pulled was that the person didn't feel that the water information was summarized enough or adequate enough in what is, you know, pretty much an abstract, the agenda, and didn't want to wade through the, all of the reports and everything to, to find that information. So, I think it was more of a comment on wanting to have maybe a better abstract. I don't know, it's probably something that staff could reach out to that person about. And, um, I just want to say for pub, public, um, who may, might feel that way. If you look at it on a computer, you can do a search for, by word, and that, that can really be helpful if there's a particular issue that you are, you know, caring about or looking for something. That's all.
Thank you. So, any other discussion on this? Seeing none? Oh, wait, John, you, oh, your hand was up, okay. So, seeing none, um, we have a motion in a second, and I will ask Laura for question.
Bongio.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McCaver.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Laura. The motion carries 6-0. Number two, we approved. Number three was pulled, Peachtree Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit, and it was pulled by both panelists or commissioners and, uh, the public. So, I'll ask for a staff report on this one, and then we'll get into discussion.
Hi, uh, David Mack with Harrison Associates, representing Peachtree Farms. Let me just share my screen and make sure everybody can see it. And we will be underway. Just want to confirm everybody can see PowerPoint.
Yes.
Great. So, the item before you now is Peachtree Farms, CUP 16 dash 357. Hold on just a moment. It is located at 40102 State Highway 36, near Dinsmore. Uh, the zoning is Forestry Recreation, or FR, with a building site, special building site overlay, and the land use designation is residential agriculture, 40 acre minimum, and this parcel size is up to 25 acres. It is for a conditional use permit to allow, uh, continuing operations of an existing 13,000, 50 square feet of out, of total cultivation, sorry, 7,500 of which is mixed light and 5,550 would be outdoor. The irrigation source for this item is an onsite permitted well, permit 18 dash 19, 0237. They are proposing water storage, existing water storage of 31,500 gallons. Their annual water usage is about 230,000 gallons or 17.7 gallons per square foot, and they are proposing electricity with onsite generators. Uh, the slide before you now is a close-up of the site, showing the location of the mixed light cultivation and the outdoor cultivation areas. The mixed light will be in, um, an existing greenhouse facility, and the outdoor will obviously be in. The mixed light will be in an existing greenhouse facility, and the outdoor will obviously be in the indicated outdoor area. The project can be considered exempt or excuse me, the project can be considered consistent with the previously mitigated NAGDEP prepared by the County of Humboldt. An addendum was prepared in January of 2021 to analyze if there were any substantial impacts or effects. There were none, and there is no new information that needs to be analyzed. Staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution to approve the CUP for the 13,050 square foot cannabis cultivation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission or public should have.
Any Commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Go ahead, Thomas.
I apologize to be the one asking so many questions. I emailed numerous questions to staff. I've got some responses. I don't know where to start. Page 34, there's a talk about employee count of six employees. And then there's another comment that there's housing that four of the employees how are housed onsite, but then there's adjoining partials. So it's confusing when you read through all these reports where which partial we're talking about sometimes. So the question is, is is the residence that four employees are residing at supposedly in the in the employee count, is that a permitted residence or the permitted septic? And if not, can we count that as less vehicle trips? Do you want me just to go on and on, Alan or Commissioner Bongio?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. There's talks at one point in time that it will be offsite processing. And then there's another part in the staff report that has processing and adjoining partial. Is that a permitted commercial building? And also I have very big concerns about the road requirements in between said parcels. As if you read in the WRPP, it states that multiple of the road services are dirt, not gravel. There was some comments back from staff that it would only have to be required to be a driveway, not a category four. But I I'm just curious, when you start having commercial activity back and forth from partial to partial to partial, that may signify, you know, a higher road standard. The other questions I had was this site operational? And I got confirmation that I had a existing interim permit. So then that raises the question why there hasn't been an LSA with Department of Fish and Wildlife. So I'd have concerns of having no deadline on submitting that LSA. And then there's multiple other environmental concerns, but according to communications with staff, those environmental concerns are not on this subject partial. And I think that's all my notes. I'm going to be quiet for a while and double check.
Thank you, Thomas. Would staff like to address those now while they're fresh?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Bongio. So as Commissioner Mulder said, he did email staff those questions. I get some responses to those questions, but I will read them for the record. The project is for one particular parcel. The owner of the site or of the parcel does own the two adjoining or adjacent parcels to the north. So there in in development of the documents, the many of the documents were prepared for the overall ownership of three parcels. This project was analyzed for just the one parcel. On this subject parcel, there is not a residence. So I don't have information whether or not that residential unit has been permitted, but it is not located on the site. I don't have any septic information with regards to that parcel or to that residence. I was trying to obtain that, but these questions I think came in middle of the day today, and I was not able to ascertain that information up till now. In terms of processing offsite, it's a similar concern. The report was prepared discussing all three parcels under the same ownership. Processing will not occur on this subject parcel, but will occur on the adjoining parcels owned by Peachtree Farms. So they are considered offsite processing from this parcel. In terms of road condition, the WRPP did photograph and detail some dirt roads. There is a document that the applicant filled out and was accepted and reviewed by the Public Works Department, where the applicant indicated that the driveway was sufficient to be a category four. Not that it is a category four, but it's equal. That document, which I could share my screen and show if the commission would like, was accepted by Public Works. And then in further email exchanges between myself and Mr. Johnson, it was explained that because the site takes access from Highway 36 directly, it is considered a driveway and the standards for, I guess, maintenance and development of a driveway are different. But Mr. Johnson did indicate to Commissioner Mulder that this project would be consistent with the 1.0 ordinance and would potentially be consistent with the 2.0 ordinance as well if it was measured under that. In terms of Commissioner Mulder mentioned, there is an existing interim permit that was issued in June of 2020 for the site. The applicant has applied for an LSAA with US Fish and Wildlife. At the time of processing, it was not finalized. Commissioner Mulder did ask about a timeline on acquiring that, and I think staff would be amenable and open to amending that condition to add a timeline. And then on some multiple, with regards to the multiple environmental concerns, as Commissioner Mulder said, most of those questions were related to the adjacent parcels. I'd be happy to answer those questions if needed. I can clarify any of that, but I do believe that most of these questions have been answered, and the project is consistent with all regulations and policies within the CMMLUO 1.0.
Thomas, did those that answer your questions?
I it it answered most of them. I still have concerns as far as roadways because I believe in the original environmental documents when the ordinance was performed, dust and erosion were concerns that needed to be mitigated. And I don't feel that the current conditions of approval mitigate those potential concerns when you have commercial activity to and from multiple partials. I did look up the fire safe regulations and do we have documentation? Because I see driveways, if they're more than 1,320 feet, they need to meet a category two road. So I don't know. I haven't seen any documentation to prove that. One way possibly to mitigate some of those concerns, like I said, it's it says in the WRPP that it's a dirt road. So maybe some sort of a four inch of aggregate base over the surface of all roads used to and from adjoining partials or something of that nature. Because I I do believe that as of right now, we are not mitigating the potential sediment or dust that is clearly defined in the environmental documents. And other than that, it's and I apologize to staff. I meant to email last night. I gave myself a post-it. And then I remembered about lunchtime, and I have to say thank you for getting the answer, a lot of answers back to me.
Thank you, Thomas. Mike Newman, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, just some of this discussion brought up a question in my mind here about the offsite processing and the other parcels owned by the same entity, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the permit on the offsite processing, that's already through? Or is it in the process of getting it or what?
To be honest, I don't actually have that information. This is the only project that was assigned to Harris with regard to Peachtree. So I don't immediately have any information as to any other projects on the adjacent parcels. And I apologize for that.
And the director?
Director, do you have any information on that?
I am not aware of whether or not there is an off the alternative parcel is approved. Let me do some research and I will get back to you.
I'll go ahead and address that, Commissioner Newman. The the other parcel, sorry, the other two parcels, there is one application that covers both of those. And that is still in process. That has not been approved yet. So what is that that activity that's occurring on the other parcel is currently, I believe, permitted under an interim permit. And if the commission desires, I can share a map that shows you all three parcels.
Would that help for anybody? Would you like him to share that?
That would be helpful a little bit with this driveway issue too, with the back and forth.
Go ahead, David.
Okay, so I believe you can see my screen. This is the subject site parcel, and these two parcels are also owned by the same applicant. If you can see my little cursor, this is the area of the cultivation proposed. All of these structures are on the adjoining parcels under the same ownership, which I believe Mr. Johnson indicated is under a separate permit.
Well, and I would just have the same concern as Commissioner Mulder about maybe the gravel being required to keep down the dust and all of that with the back and forth then with the two parcels. I would think that would be prudent, but is that something that we can require? I'm asking of staff on that.
And that is something that we can absolutely require. One of the things that I thought I heard is that the WRPP did address these roads and the fact that they they need treatment. And we can certainly add an additional condition just to make sure that that's addressed.
Through, if I could through the chair, that is correct. The WRPP identifies a number of projects that need to be done for the overall road. With relation to this site, it identifies specifically projects two and three. I can look up what those are, but I know that they are applicable to this site and some improvement that need to be done on the site.
If if the commission would like to hear what those two are, I'm happy to describe them. If not, they are in condition number 12 in the staff report.
But want to hear that or is everybody okay with that information? Thank you then, sir. Thomas, do you do you have your hand back up?
So can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize again. I'm the new guy that just keeps asking questions. I saw I heard that those were roughly 25 acre partials or 20 something. So usually a quarter, quarter, if correct me if I'm wrong, but they're usually around 1,400 feet or something like that from one end to the parcel to the other. So seeing the distance in the cultivation area on this subject project to the farthest cultivation area on the the top of the screen, the not the adjoining partial, but the next after that. I I'm very concerned of the driveway length of being over 1,320 feet. So I I would be more comfortable if we use the fire safe standards and address that with being the equivalent of a category two road as in fire safe regulations within county code. If I'm wrong in what I'm reading, please correct me.
All right. Staff want to tackle that one or do you need some time to look?
One of the things that I would address is that we're trying to use a standard for circulation between structures on the site for and and use standards that are intended to address fire safety. The fire safety is access to the site. I don't believe that these internal driveways are used for primary access to the site. And and so each individual parcel has access to a public road. That's where the fire safe standards need to be applied. In terms of internal convenience, rather than going out the the road and coming back in, that's not what we're trying to accomplish here is create roads within the parcels. But we do need to address absolutely the water quality.
The other thing I'll add for consideration, if if it matters, and I could share this again. There are SRA turnaround areas, state responsibility area, fire turnaround areas on the site. It doesn't address the water quality issue or the dust mitigation issue. But in terms of fire safe regulations, there are areas for fire truck to fire trucks or apparatus to access and turn around and leave. So that is one issue that staff did look at in terms of fire safe regulations and access to the site.
Mike, do you have a question?
Yes, just in relation to Director Ford's comment there. Is it, would it be safe to say that we could require that they go out on the main road and then come back in on each parcel's access then? Because I feel that human beings, just as we are, you want to go the shortest route, especially if you're onsite and going between the parcels there. Is that something that we can require on this approval?
Well, you certainly can. I I mean, but I think the point that I was trying to raise is do you really want to and need to do that? The fire safe issue is providing emergency equipment to the site from the exterior. Having people run back and forth between greenhouses on an interior road inside by sides doesn't require a category two road. And so do you want that amount of grading and that amount of disturbance going on on the interior of the site? If you want that, certainly require it, require a category two road with, you know, six inches of gravel.
Well, Thomas might know a little bit more about the inner workings of what the farms would be like, but and I defer to him on that. I would think that between when cultivation is done and then processing, that it would be pretty well traveled in between on the interior roads quite a bit if that is permitted as opposed to going outside. And you would have a lot of dust and everything else going on there. Certainly not needing the fire safe standards, but for anything else.
Well, if if I could, we absolutely agree. Address the dust, you know, address the surface of the road. But do you really want to widen it? Do you want to? I mean, what is the objective here? And and that's part of the the question. If if we're trying to create fire safe standards for every road on the site, that's a that's a far different issue.
I also, not to jump in turn, but I think if I share this map, it will add some clarity or discussion points to this. This site does access from Highway 36, but it's a road easement that does cross a property line. So if I could share the screen, I think it would help us out a little.
Go ahead.
So this, I believe you can see it now. This is where the access comes through because both of these properties are owned by the same owner. There's a 50 foot road easement, and then it comes back into the parcel. So while it does have access to this parcel requiring, potentially requiring its own driveway, as Director Ford said, would require additional grading. It could be a CEQA issue as well as a lot of dust mitigation and other issues that may come up with requiring that much grading on this.
Thank you. Can you give us back our screen, please? So any other questions? Thomas, you have your hand up. You got any question?
Is it appropriate for me to respond to Commissioner Newman's? Is it appropriate for me to respond to Commissioner Newman's question?
Can, yes.
So inner workings depends on what the policies are on the individual farms. I know it can go as extreme as people driving 50 miles an hour on a side by side from parcel to parcel, rolling and wrecking to as mellow as some people that modify their side by side so they won't go over 12 miles an hour at maximum speed. And that's just the way it is with, you know, some places being rutted in between properties and other places being well rocked and maintained in between every interior road. So it's it the scope of what is SOP, I guess you would consider is you got to get there. I mean, me personally, my like, I'd rather you be late than get in an accident or make someone angry or create dust. So I don't, I I I'm very uncomfortable with at least not treating. I understand Director Ford, he makes a very valid point about, you know, opening up roadways, but I feel we really have to deal with the dust. Also, if, you know, the roads could be traveled at high rates of speed, I don't, I don't personally know. I've never been to the site, so.
Thank you. Noah, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I I want to thank Commissioner Mulder for asking some good questions and delving into some stuff that I hadn't taken as close a look at. I I guess I just wanted to chime in specifically to respond to Director Ford on his last point and and say, I I thought his his point about, you know, let's be clear what problem we are attempting to solve for or address was was persuasive. And for my money, I do think it's it's the environmental impact of that amount of driving on roads that if untreated and if not properly maintained, could produce a lot of a lot of sediment to the waterways and potentially other pollutants. So, I mean, I guess, but that that being said, I would have thought that the that the WRPP addressed that pretty well, and I have to confess that I didn't take a close look at this one. You know, there it's it's one of the many documents that, you know, we we sort of rely on on the staff to look at those and and maybe we should look at them each individually, but we don't always have time. So I mean, I I guess that's that's let me summarize my point by saying this. I do think that that where an application is concerned with one parcel, but in fact, the ownership consists of two or three other parcels, which may indeed have other cultivation activities and other permits coming down at other phases. We we sort of have a duty as a department to look at the applications and the properties holistically. And I would hope that we exercise every opportunity as, you know, as a staff to do that, to to sort of look at, well, what are we maybe not seeing here, but we will see in a year when that next application ripens. But, you know, that said, I I don't want to totally rewrite what our standards have been for judging those just based on these questions. But I do think the question's about, do I guess my question is, is the staff satisfied that the WRPP is protective sufficiently of of those environmental issues, particularly water quality issues that have been raised? And and finally, having said, having said all that, I realize that we're still, we still haven't gotten to public discussion of this. I'm wondering if the the applicant is here or his agent that may be able to address some of these questions as well. Thank you.
Yes, I was gonna point that out, Noah. So thank you. Thomas, you got your hand back up, so I'll before we go to public and the applicant, I'll let you speak.
So what triggered me to read this specific project probably four times, at least three? It's all the way in the back, maybe four pages from the back. That roadway, the pictures, the colored pictures of the roadway surfaces, which triggered me to reread and analyze every last word in the document. So for people listening from the public, if you go, it's like literally three or four pages from the very back of everything. And that's it.
Oh, I see. You have your hand back up.
I'm sorry. No, I meant to lower that.
Did staff want to answer that question of Thomas's or? I don't know if he wanted, did you want to see that picture again? Thomas, is that what you were?
I was planning to move when y'all get home, so.
It was just a statement of what got me to read through this multiple times.
I'm sorry. I thought you were asking to have it put back up again. I apologize. All right, so seeing no more questions from the commission, I'm going to open this up to public comment now. And hopefully the applicant can speak as well and address some of the questions that have come up. So the first yes, that the first is is Kent, and then I would ask if anybody else, and then I'll ask the applicant to speak last. Go ahead, Kent.
Thank you for an opportunity to speak. I just want to let some of you know that the computer I have takes 20 minutes sometimes to download a staff report. Maybe that's just my antiquated computer. Maybe you have that problem also. When you're requesting me to go ahead and do the due diligence that Mr. Mulder does, be careful what you ask for. I probably can come up with 20 pertinent questions for every single one of these. Instead, I rely upon what should be a concise agendized item that I can understand the project and not have to ask the questions. Again, if staff doesn't get back to me, then I have to pull things. Mr. Mulder had a hard time with staff. I usually call a certain person two or three days before this, and if I get a few answers, then a lot of these things don't happen and I don't feel like I should pull them. My question on this particular project is power is provided by an onsite diesel generator, 250 KW. Is there any plan voluntarily by the applicant on this who will have a chance to speak after me to consider going to Project Trellis or some other way to convert from a diesel generator into something a little bit more environmentally friendly? That's my request as far as asking that question of the applicant. And the other question I had here on this one, again, we have a well. And again, I have angst with the wells and I can't see whether there's this this agendized item doesn't say that there's any storage, any forbearance or anything at all. So those questions could easily be asked. I'm consistently asking the same questions. And this has, I think, five lines as far as the agendized item. And some of the other ones have eight. All of my questions could be answered in eight lines, and I would probably not be bothering you or taking your time or requesting that you take more time. It's it's interesting that Mr. Mulder comes along and a whole bunch of things are coming up now, and he should be proud of what he's doing out there. And it should be you folks coming up with those questions, in my opinion, rather than myself asking these questions and being brought forward by other people. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Kent, the next public speaker is 7108. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Hi, this is Bonnie by Barry. I just wanted to make a comment on the dust. I live in a subdivision. Actually, we keep our roads up really well. But one day somebody was driving fast up the road and there was this huge, there was so much dust that I thought there was a fire happening. So this, these dirt and gravel roads produce an amazing amount of dust. The faster you drive, the more you make, and then it floats around and ends up in the watercourses and stuff. So I just wanted to add to Thomas's concern. Thanks.
You, Bonnie. Is the applicant available? I see no more public. If the applicant would like to address the commission or in any of the questions that have been brought up, now would be the time. Seeing none. I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission for deliberation. Bring it back to the commission. Is there more discussion or would somebody like to make a motion on this? Anyone? All right. So where do we go from here? Go ahead, Mike.
I just want to add in there that as a condition, I would like to see gravel added. Doesn't have to be widened. But if gravel does help on keeping the dirt and dust down for the mitigation that way, I certainly would not be opposed to seeing that in some of the recommendations.
Thomas, go ahead.
All right, my computer has some weird delay of when I raise my hand when it shows me. I would, I would support that added condition of approval. I I personally would like to see a 12 month timeframe, maybe even six months for the LSA on condition number 12 to at least show that they're entering into an LSAA. Yes, CDFW is very, very sometimes slower than getting processes through. But this subject parcel has been involved with CDFW since 2016, I believe, with all the documentation I've read with as far as environmental concerns. So I'm not comfortable with anything more than 12 months for them to prove that they've entered into an LSAA. I would actually be leaning heavier towards six months after finding out that they are able to operate in 2020. And I would I'll leave it there.
Noah, so you have your hand up?
Sorry, no, that was just my failure to lower it again. I think, I didn't mean to do that. I'm doing this on a different device today. I apologize.
No problem. Any other thoughts on this one? Would Mike, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
By a condition, if you will.
Director would like to chime in on things.
So Commissioner Newman, if this would help you, I'd offer this as a a new condition. The applicant shall install a surface on all interior driveways servicing the cultivation activities with a minimum of four inch of base rock with adequate best management practices to minimize dust and control sedimentation to be installed prior to May 31st, 2022 or 2021. And then the one thing that we could add as a condition to condition number 12, that the LSAA be finalized within a six month period unless the delays are related to actions by CDFW. Because one of the things we can't control is the timeframe in which CDFW responds. And there, we don't want to hang the applicant out when they've been responsive.
Work for you guys?
I think that works. So I'll make the motion to find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medicinal land use ordinance. It's described by section 15164 of the state SEQA guidelines. And find that the commission is considered the addendum with the two changes with the addition and the change in staff recommendation 12 to the adapted mitigated negative declaration of the commercial CCMLUO is described by section 15164 of the state SEQA guidelines and approve Peachtree Farms LLC conditional use permit as recommended by staff, subject to those conditions that we just talked about, the addition of the best method with the four inch rock and by May 21 and the six month, subject to the proposed or possible backup of CFW.
I'll second that.
Second that.
I think Melanie beat you to it, Thomas, but that's, doesn't matter. So we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask Laura for the question.
Bondio?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Newman?
Affirmative.
O'Neil?
Yes.
McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next one is item number four. Farm Code 2 LLC conditional use permit and special permit on Patterson Road or 1,005 Patterson Road Willow Creek area. And this is one that was pulled by Kent, so I will ask him if there is a specific question that he had on this item that could be answered by staffs. Since none of the none of the commissioners asked to have this one pulled, then we wouldn't have to go through the whole staff report. Go ahead, Thomas. You got your hand up?
I actually tried raising my hand on this. I don't need a staff report. I have a specific question on a specific page.
Okay, well, let's, let's let Kent ask his question since I just opened it up to him. And if he's there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. Is there a question?
There is. This is, this is one that I, again, you have quite a bit more information in here. I think you've probably got nine lines. But that gave me a question that I asked, I think maybe you folks may already have the answer to if you read the whole report or not. This is within a Willow Creek planning area. And I always have a little bit of angst if it's in the planning area and if we don't have some actual response back from them. And I would request that if you, I would request my information, I request from staff is is were they notified? Did they respond positive or negative? And do we therefore, do we have any proof of service that these people have had their input? The other question I had on this particular project was that there's a reduction from 600 feet from the Six Rivers Forest down to 100 feet. And it's specifically for the purpose of a nursery greenhouse. And I'm just curious why on a, on a, I don't have the site as far as the size goes, but it sounds like it's a pretty good sized site. Why there wouldn't be someplace without violating that setback that Six Rivers National Forest has? And again, I'm, I understand they won't have commented on it, but I just would hope that staff would, inciting these particular kind of things would do the best they can to require the applicant to cite those things someplace other than within that setback. Or in this case, this particular structure possibly could would not even be needed, possibly they could source their greenhouse stock from someplace other than this. So it's not to, not to get within that 600 feet, but that's just that, that's my questions on this particular project.
Kent, is there any other public that would like to ask questions on this topic? Seeing none, I will close, I'll let the okay, I'll, I'll let the applicant speak if she wants to speak at this time. Go ahead, Star 6. Mary? Oh, Stephen, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Stephen. You have to unmute yourself, please.
Hi, this is Stephen Blue. I'm an agent for the applicant. Is the 100, what is the setback reduction? Because the the nursery is quite a far away. I'm wondering if that was like a legacy item that was inadvertently copied into the staff report. Because there are the nursery. I'm just, I'm just wondering where that's coming from. If we can pull up the site plan and the the setback issue with respect to the project itself. And then I'm also happy to answer any specific questions with respect to. And then I'm also happy to answer any specific questions with respect to the project that Mr. Mulder may have as well.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant and then the director would like to address the setback issue? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Stephen. Director, I'll let you go ahead and address that.
I was actually trying to pull up the site plan myself.
While you're doing that, I will officially close the, the public side of this and bring it back to the commission. And I see Megan has her hand up. Maybe she can help with that. Go ahead, Megan, if maybe you have the, can answer that question.
Yeah, I can answer a couple of these questions. The project was notified in September to the, the public regarding the community planning area. And we did not receive any comments or public concern regarding the project. This is an already existing site. And they're just adding 22,000 square feet of light depth greenhouses. The original approved project already had a special permit for the setback reduction to Six Rivers. But with the added propagation greenhouse that reduced the setback another 100 feet, which it is now 495 feet from Six Rivers National Forest.
I answered that question. All right, Thomas, I see you have your hand up. So go ahead.
This was another project I emailed staff about. And thank you to Megan for answering a couple of the questions that I had. The biggest, the last question I have that I cannot support unless there's a condition is on page 58. There's this open trench that's considered to be a French drain with steep edges. It's just a ditch, like basically an excavator or backhoe just dug a trench for a watered outlet. It's not laid back. I feel that trench needs to be filled with rock to, you know, I just can't support it as a licensed contractor and just give me OCD seeing an open trench left like that. Staff believe that it was still open without, filled with rock. So unless there was some sort of condition to fill that with rock, I just, I couldn't support a ditch like that. And thank you.
Mike Newman, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I was going to say in the executive summary, it says 495 back setback. But when Megan mentioned something, I didn't quite catch exactly what she said about the Willow Creek community district. Was that, did they make any comment? Was that the community district or just the general public that you referenced, Megan? About comments?
Hi, Mike. Yeah, so the, the project was noticed for, I believe it's a thousand-foot setback. So any, any parcels within 1,000 feet of the project area were noticed for the outdoor cultivation within a community planning area, and we did not receive any comments back.
So if I noticed, what do you mean by noticed?
It was a notice of application?
So if I could, just to be really clear, this is a 2.0 application. There's a requirement that as soon as the application is complete, that we send out a notice to all property owners within 1,000 feet of the property, notifying them that we have received an application and we're processing an application for cannabis cultivation at this location. And then subsequently to that, as Ms. Asveto is mentioning, we sent out a notice of the public hearing. So the Willow Creek community member residents within 1,000 feet of this project have been noticed twice that we're processing an application and that we're holding this public hearing.
If I could just add real quickly through the chair, I, I think perhaps one of those questions may have been referring to the Willow Creek Community Service District. And so I'm, I'm looking through our referral list right now. And this, this project was when we sent it out for referrals, it was referred to the Willow Creek Community Services District. I don't see that they ever responded, however. And Megan, I'm sure will correct me if, if they did get a response, but I'm not seeing that here. So just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions of the commission? Anybody care to make a motion on this one? Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, I, I actually just wanted to ask Thomas again, because it took me a moment to pull up. He seemed to be particularly concerned about a particular photo in the WRPP. Thomas, did you say, can you say again which photo that was on which page?
It's page 58 that's numbered in, according to the packets that I got. It's an open trench with like a wooden bridge across it, like a pallet and supply wood, maybe, or something like that.
Oh, is it, is it, is it in the main staff report for this project, not the WRPP?
It's page 58 of the total.
58. Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
If, if it would, if the commissioners would like, I could share, excuse me, my screen, which has that picture up right now, just so that everybody's.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. So, and Commissioner Mulder, correct me if this isn't the picture that you're referring to. I believe it is, though. So just let me know when you'd like me to stop sharing.
So is this proposed to stay like this? It would not change? This is a French drain?
Appears to be more like a dry stream bed to me.
Well, it looks like a dug ditch to me.
Right.
Just to control water in the winter. All right.
This is where it would just be handy to be able to ask the applicant if, in fact, this is a misunderstanding that this would just remain an open ditch and if it in fact has been filled with, I mean, you know, it, it looks to me like it's being called a French drain and maybe it's not. Or maybe there's a layer of gravel there that we can't see. But I was, you know, trying to see if we could address this since it sounded like Commissioner Mulder was not able to support this project unless this was addressed. But perhaps we can't.
I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to this if he would like to come back on. To ask Noah. Are you there? You have to unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry, I was struggling with that for a second there. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, trying to juggle being on the line with the applicant and asking him the specific question and, and being at the Zoom hearing at the same time. But yeah, if there's a, a request to go ahead and put some more armoring in that ditch, we can go ahead. The question, I'd have to double check the WRPP because my, my involvement with this project is primarily drafting and some zoning analysis. And the majority of the, sort of the work, more, majority of the application materials were developed as part of the 1.0 application that was approved on this project. But after speaking with the applicant, they, they don't actually believe that, that particular French drain is on the property. It might be on an access. I'm not, I'm not, we'd have to go back and look. But if, if it's a requirement to go ahead and armor that ditch a little bit more, we, applicant is completely comfortable with that condition of approval.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm going to close that public hearing now and come back to the commission.
Okay.
Thomas, you have your hand up. So.
Yes. So if it was a ditch relief, it's mislabeled. And a ditch relief drainage would be, you know, shaped not to have vertical sides. And if it's a French drain, every French drain I've ever seen is it's filled back up to the native grade. That's why it's considered a French drain. It drains underneath and you don't actually see the water on the surface. So it's either mislabeled or a missed sloped drainage ditch. It just, like I said, the picture caught my attention and it, I would, I would support it to, it's just, it's, it's a hazard. If you really look at it, it could be a hazard.
Any other questions or thoughts on this one?
If not, I'm, I'm willing to move approval. I don't, I'm willing to make a motion. I'm, I guess I'm not, not sure whether to amend, make any suggested amendment to the conditions. I, I'm grateful that, that Thomas has, again, you know, called our attention to something that is at least a labeling error and it's confusing whether or not it represents, you know, a real oversight in our condition. So with that, I'm, I'm willing to make the motion that we have considered the addendum to the, oh wait, let me make sure I'm on the right Peachtree Farms. Yes, that we've considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical land use ordinance as described by section 15164 of the state sequoia guidelines. And approve the Peachtree Farms LLC conditioner use permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions. I'm so sorry. That's, yeah, whoops, I realized as I was saying that, that's not what we're talking about anymore. I withdraw that motion while I pull up that one. I just got my staff reports crossed. Apologies for that.
No problem. It happens. Second to get it.
Yeah. Okay.
The, can I just add something in there real quick there, Commissioner Levy?
Yes, of course, Mike.
On, on this French drain, it's also labeled that in the picture in the layout, page 60, 60, with where it's at there. That looks like a hazard to me, and it's not a French drain. That is for sure. That is exactly as Thomas had mentioned that a French drain is level with the, the regular grade. So I would like to see that made into a French drain or sloped where it can be a ditch, whatever it needs to be.
Sure. I'm, I'm, let's, let's, as I reformulate my motion, we are discussing, sorry, I'm seeing questions in the chat, but I'm not sure, maybe that's not for me to answer. Yeah, okay, so I'm, I'm happy to say that, that there's, that we'll add a condition. Director Ford, can you, you're usually good at coming up with an appropriately worded amended condition. Do you have any thoughts on this one regarding the perhaps mislabeled French drain?
If I could offer this as, as possible language, that the French drain label is such on page 58 of the staff report shall be modified to either function as a properly designed French drain or shall be regraded to be an appropriate drainage swale subject to issuance of a permit issued by the Planning and Building Department.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Well, I see a lot of heads nodding. With that, I would then make the motion that we find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted environmental impact report for the commercial cannabis land use ordinance as described by section 15164 of the state sequoia guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit and adopt the resolution approving the Armco 2 LLC CUP and special permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions, including the additional recommended condition just stated by Director Ford.
Your motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Thomas is the second. All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I will ask Laura to ask the question.
Onio?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Newman?
Affirmative.
O'Neil?
Yes.
McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries 6-0. It's 7:30. Usually we take a small break about this time, so let's, let's take five minutes and then we will come back and move on to the item number five. See you in five. All right, welcome back, everybody. And we will go to item number five, BB Ranch LLC conditional use permit and special permit. And this one was asked to be pulled by Kent, so I would ask Kent if he has, if he's out there, if he has a specific question that staff could answer, because nobody else wanted to have this one pulled, trying to expedite things along. So Ken, if you're there, go ahead and ask your question and if we can answer it, move on. That'll save us some time.
Thank you for my opportunity. I did want to make note that if I hadn't pulled these items, you guys wouldn't be having your 20 or 30-minute discussions on each one as we went. Wanted to point that out. My questions would be answered in a matter of a couple of minutes. Anyway, I'm glad you're paying attention to some of these things. This particular project has some things that, again, there's a lack of consistency in. Of course, I would like to see a voluntary thing of electricity source from generator power. To have staff probably come out and mention these people that maybe solar power could be done through, through the special funding that's coming from Measure S. Don't know whether the Trellis project would be directed, if these people are being directed. I would appreciate it if they were. It also has, this application includes a special permit for a setback reduction to the public land adjacent to the property. The prior one we had said what public land it was and what the different setback change was in it. And that again was in the, in the agendized item that I was reading, and yet this one doesn't. So again, that's my, a lot of my angst. We don't have a consistent method of transmitting knowledge in the agendized items that the public can read and, and come away understanding the project. And that's what I believe it's for. And I did also want to mention, this one is in the Willow Creek area. It's an existing onsite well. There's only 11,000 gallons of storage. I don't know from this, obviously, because sometimes you say how many gallons are being used and how many not. But that is in the Willow Creek watershed. All of these wells potentially would be impacting the water supply for the, for the, for the Willow Creek Services District. And again, I don't know whether they've been consulted. And in the prior one, I also, I continue to have angst where, hey, we did public notice. But I would like to have it actually acknowledged by the Services District in the Willow Creek area that they received this and they have no comments to make on these projects that fall within their sphere. This one, if it's affecting their watershed, definitely should have been notified because there's a cumulative loss of water, which was discussed earlier in the meeting. And so I'd appreciate the, some clarification on the reduction of the public lands, what's that, what public lands that is and how much it's being reduced to. I'd also like to have, not bullying, but just asking possibly the applicant would be willing to consider doing something rather than generator power, especially if they could give money for Project Trellis. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Staff, director, would you like to answer any of those questions?
I, I can, but maybe it would be more efficient to let everybody ask questions and we'll answer them all.
Okay. Well, then I will ask if the applicant would like to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will close the public comments side and I will bring it back to the commission. Seeing none, I will close the public comment side and I will bring it back to the commission. And is there any questions for staff on this one? I know nobody raised their hand when we were, had it on consent, asked about consent. But is there now? Seeing none, I'll let the director answer the, yes, Thomas has his hand up. Excuse me.
After the director, please.
Okay.
After the director.
Okay. Noah, do you have a question or do you want to?
Yeah, I'll speak after the director. I may, it may just be a comment. Yeah.
Go ahead, Director.
So one of the things I just wanted to make sure is that in terms of, I, I completely understand what the public commenter is saying about wanting to see that agencies provide a response. But on the other hand, if they don't respond, we have no way of obligating them to respond. And that could result in an inability to process applications. So I, I would just caution the commission about requiring responses from people. We do provide notice. We do collaborate with other agencies. We do collaborate with CSDs to make sure that they're getting that information. But if they choose not to respond for whatever reason, it could be workload, it would be very difficult to require them to, to do that. There is an ongoing discussion about the use of well water. Obviously, that's becoming more controversial. That comment has been addressed before. In terms of the setback reduction, you know, it's, it's interesting. One of the things that we do here and perhaps it would be worth having a discussion on what is a project description. Some places go with a very minimalist project description. It's a use permit for X amount of square feet of cultivation and a special permit for a setback reduction. And that's all that's on the agenda. If people are concerned about it, they can read the staff report. That is the philosophy of, of most other places. In terms of solar power, this is something the commission has discussed before, wanting to encourage a conversion away from generator power. I don't know that we can require a project to obtain Trellis funds or Measure S funds simply because we don't make the decision on whether or not those funds are going to be allocated to a particular source. The commission certainly can require that there be a discontinuation of a, of the generator at a certain point. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions for the director? Wow. So Thomas, you're next.
It's kind of just a brief statement. As far as I, I agree with what the director said, the holding up agency responses on a project. I think sometimes things get lost in the wayside and I think it could be an undue burden on the department, the planning and building department with processing things and also applicants, because sometimes things just aren't responded to. Brief statement about Trellis, as the director said as well, as someone who sits on Project Trellis, it's not that easy to get the funding. So it, it's quite involved. And one last little plug before I make a motion is there's an at-large vacancy on Project Trellis. So, you know, if anyone's interested in sitting on there. But I'd like to make a motion to find the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance, CMMLUO, as described by section one five one six four of the state sequel guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use based on the evidence in staff report and adopt the resolution approving the BB Ranch LLC conditional use permit and special permit as recommended by sta- by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thomas, do we have a second?
I'll second that. And I, I would like to make a brief comment before we come to a vote.
Say your hand was up next thing, so.
Okay. Thanks. Sure. Well, I, I actually wanted to apologize for perhaps speaking a little too harshly to Mr. Sawatsky because I think he's raised an important process discussion that I'm glad we're having. I, in fact, had not been aware of the size that each of the staff reports is. And I do think that having to download an eight or nine megabyte file to, you know, get some of the basic information about these projects is, is maybe overkill and clearly is difficult for some people like Mr. Sawatsky who are in fact interested. So I just want to put it out there in light of this discussion. I, I agree, there's only so much. As the director says, we already put a lot of information in our agendas compared to other agendas I've seen. What I wonder though, since the department has already taken real positive steps to make supplemental documents available through the Lexstar system, which didn't used to be, what I find is the most useful five or six pages in every staff report is the executive summary. You know, maybe sometimes they're ten pages. They're rarely any more than that. They're almost always all text, maybe with a map. So I wonder if we could think about making the executive summary of a staff report available as a separate download, which would be a lot easier for the public to digest. And then, you know, then that might in fact be the best way to have the information be fairly easily obtainable so that if there are real questions, it's not questions that could have been answered from, from the staff reports first few pages. That was my comment and it wasn't really pertaining to this. It wasn't specifically pertaining to this items vote.
Thank you. Noah, the director would like to address that.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. That's a great idea and we will do that, starting with our next CA and planning commission agendas.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mike, I see you have your hand up.
So just in addition to that, the, the staff recommendations could be included beside the executive summary?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Right. The, the sort of first, yeah, the introductory sections, including that. You're right. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and we have a second out there. Is there any more discussion on the motion than the second? Seeing none, I will ask Laura for the question.
Bongio?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Newman?
Is that me? Was that me?
Yes. Sorry.
Affirmative. I heard Lehman.
Oh, O'Neal?
Yes.
McAver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The motion carries unanimous. And that brings us to item number six, which is the last of our pulled consent items. And it's Rising Sun Ranch LLC conditional use permit in the Redwood Valley area. And once again, Kent, you were the only person who pulled this one. So we're going to try this one more time, let you speak and then hopefully they can answer your questions. Go ahead, Kent. Unmute yourself. There you go.
There we go. Took a couple of tries.
It's all good.
Noah Levy, I think you're a rocket scientist. You may be my favorite one here. That's a great idea that you may find other people will participate in the process and you might get some ideas that are superior to mine, which wouldn't take much. But I think that will make it a lot easier, both for me and for you folks, because I know you're busy and if you had to come down to last minute and could resort to that information, that would be great. Regarding the notification of districts and things, all I'm suggesting is that you, you make sure they got the notice and that would be a certified return letter. I think that would not slow your permitting process up one little bit. And then that would leave any angst as far as all of us knowing that they've had response. So on this particular project here, we have a, again, a permitted ground water well in the Redwood Valley area. And it has only storage of five thousand five hundred two hard tanks and an estimated usage. And we have these numbers in here greatly appreciated, two hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred gallons, eighteen gallons per square foot. And it just, again, the request that I'm asking, and I'm, I'm the first one to make sure that maybe Trellis project for this particular kind of stuff gets ten times the funding it hasn't. I push on these things and usually get ignored by the supervisor. But I, I'm asking if the policy is on any of these projects, where this one we have powered provided by three generators and a solar array, that, you know, that the staff is saying you might want to apply to Project Trellis or find that funding to enable, unable to, to deploy. So that's all I'm asking. Just, I am, I'm asking the staff notify a person like this who has three generators, possibly they can go ahead and upgrade their solar array and eliminate those three generators. So I guess now we're asking for what the question I have here. Is it possible that they would be required to head toward a direction of forbearance on this and have more storage in pond or something else? Because of course the storage is non-existent for that kind of water usage. So that's my question on this one. And again, is it possible if the applicants available and wished of their own free, without being bullied or pressured, to consider switching over to solar? Again, that's a, a great thing and it's been volunteered repeatedly today. I had people earlier in the day start that ten o'clock volunteering to do that. So thank you, my opportunity to speak on this. And we have one more project at seven forty-nine. Hopefully we will all get home early.
Sorry about that. I muted myself. So thank you, Kent. We, the next hand up is public six zero zero eight. You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. Hi. Yeah, I'm the applicant. My name's Rashawn. That was actually a misprint. There should have been a one in front of there. I actually have fifteen thousand gallons of storage. But of course, I would be open to adding more storage if needed, you know? All I've been trying to do is be compliant and, you know, do whatever is necessary to, you know, please the county and whoever.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant while we have him here? All right. Seeing none. Thank you for waiting till the end and, and commenting and I'll bring it back to the commission. So I'm going to close the public section of this and bring it back to the commission. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Peggy, I see you. Put your hand up.
My question is to John Ford. If you are considering sending out certified letters, I think it's also really important that the fire districts be notified. All of these cannabis farms put a great deal of pressure on the fire district. If there's medical emergencies or accidents or fires, it's your local fire or CDF that has to respond and that cost is and burden falls on them. So as we bring more business and people, workers into these rural areas, I think fire protection should not be overlooked.
We, we, we agree and.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question or comments on this?
Alan, you're, you're muted.
Sorry.
And public six thousand eight is not muted.
Close the public here inside of it. So Josh just got, took care of it. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So any other questions for the commission or would somebody like to make a motion on this one? You guys are slow on the draw tonight. Thoughts? Any recommendations, changes, conditions?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, way to step up, Mike.
So I'll make the motion to find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration of the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance, CCMLUO, as described by section fifteen one six four of the state sequel guidelines. Make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the Rising Sun Ranch Farms, Inc. conditional use permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
I'm happy to second. Oh, okay. Melanie beeped me to it.
Hey, Melanie, thank you. So any discussion on the motion in the second? Seeing none, I will ask Laura to ask the question.
Bongio?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Newman?
Affirmative.
O'Neal?
Yes.
McAver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Laura, motion carries unanimous. So with that, we will move on to section G, which is the continued public hearings. And there's one and it is Rising Goat Limited Special Permit at fourteen hundred Ross Road, Garberville area. And I would ask for a staff report on this one.
Sir Bongio?
Yes.
Can I do, the way I read it, I'm supposed to disclose ex parte discussions before the hearings opened. Is that correct?
It, it's good to, when it, to at least let us know. It doesn't necessarily have to be at the beginning, but thank you.
Okay. That's just the way I read the rules. So I'm going to do it. At some point in time, the applicant reached out to staff. Staff reached out to me and gave me a phone number. I had a brief conversation with a guy, Paul, I believe, is the applicant. It, it was leading in a, in a negative finger pointing manner in which I was not comfortable with. And it led to a point where I was, for lack of a better term, told that what I saw with my own eyes wasn't there either. So I ended the conversation when my other phone call rang. And today, I believe it was today, actually, no. It was on my way back from Shasta yesterday. I was contacted by Bonnie Blackberry and I had a conversation with her from Weaverville until I lost service headed back towards the coast. I did not look at the amount of time and that was the extent of my communications.
Thank you. Now we'll have a staff report, please.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Cliff Johnson and I'm going to go ahead and present the, what is called the Rising Goat Limited Project. It is a special permit. So I'm going to just share my screen, which hopefully is being shared now.
Yes.
So this item was continued from the February fourth planning commission hearing. And that was mainly as a result of some confusion that arose from the applicant's proposal as well as some suggested revisions to conditions of approval. And some questions about how the, any of those revisions might affect some of the issues that have been raised of concern here, primarily the amount of water and power that would be used for the project. So since that February fourth hearing, staff has worked with the applicant to understand the project and make sure that we have a common understanding of it. I also did go out and do a site visit with the applicant and the applicant's agent yesterday. And so what I will be presenting here is going to be slightly different than what was presented at the February fourth hearing. But those changes are in all instances less intensive and less use of resources than what was reviewed by the planning commission on February fourth. So I'm going to go ahead and move through this. So the proposed project is a special permit to authorize eighteen thousand square feet of outdoor light deprivation, cannabis cultivation on an approximately twenty acre parcel. This site has been operating as a cannabis site for a number of years. It did apply under ordinance one point oh as an existing cultivation of approximately ten thousand square feet. And due to some property ownership changes, the current applicant was unable to transfer. the current applicant was unable to transfer the application. And so was required to apply under ordinance 2.0. The window for applying for pre-existing cannabis cultivation under 2.0 had closed by that time. And so this is under the ordinance new cultivation. Project site itself does meet the requirements for new cannabis cultivation. So the water source here is a permitted well. Processing is proposed to occur at an off-site licensed processing facility. The applicant's proposing no employees. The operation would be managed by family members of the LLC. Power is proposed by solar with a generator for backup. And because this is not using any lights and processing would occur offsite, that power is needed primarily for the water pump. So since, these are some of the clarifications that have occurred since the last planning commission hearing. The project was described as mixed light cultivation. And we understand that that is primarily due to some confusion between the county's definition of mixed light and the state's definition of mixed light. Because under the county's ordinance, light deprivation is outdoor cultivation. And under the state license requirements, light deprivation is considered mixed light. And so their materials did reference mixed light. We've worked with them to clarify that this is their intent, which is light deprivation. Due to the applicant proposing some changes, which was primarily drip irrigation, there would be just under 250,000 gallons that would be required. And again, they're not proposing any employees. The site would be operated by family members. Project site is located here approximately one and a half miles north of Alderpoint Road, just off of Dyerville Loop Road. You'll see here, the project site itself. The yellow is showing Ross Road, which comes off of Dyerville Loop Road and then serves the project site. You'll note here Ross Road bifurcates the parcel. And there is a cultivation area on the north side of Ross Road here that's proposed to be decommissioned and removed. So in the center of the parcel is where all of this proposed cultivation would occur. At the February 4th hearing, we did staff and the planning commission to discuss some changes to the conditions of approval. This one in particular was suggested to address some of the concerns raised by both staff and the members of the public regarding the well. And so in the staff report, condition of approval number four currently reads, prior to operation of any cannabis activity, the applicant shall complete one of the following. Present a report from a qualified hydrogeologist that determines the well and its current screening intervals are not connected to any surface water features, including local springs, or cap the existing well and dig a new well, which has been demonstrated by a qualified hydrogeologist, to not be hydrologically connected to any surface water or to basically apply for and receive approval from the planning commission of a modification to require rainwater collection as the source of water. So one of those options would be required to be met prior to operation of any cannabis on the parcel. On February 4th, there was also some discussion regarding condition of approval number eight, which originally had recommended restocking white oak species on the property at a seven to one ratio. And the applicant did raise some concern about that and also pointed out that in the timber conversion evaluation report that was prepared, that was not the recommendation. So what we've revised here is condition of approval number eight, which would require that they comply with that evaluation report and restock as necessary. In that evaluation report, it basically requires for a forester to go out and identify if any white oak species were removed and then to restore those basically at a one to one ratio. And so what I want to point out for the commission is where that oak removal may have occurred. You're looking here at a 2012 image. And I want to direct your attention to the southern property line. And when I move forward in time to 2016, you can see that there's cultivation that's occurring there and some tree removal. And that's right on the property line. This conversion did occur before the current applicant had an interest in the property. And so it's unclear who was responsible for this conversion. The current property owner believes that that was a trespass cultivation by an adjacent property owner. And so right now, there may not be much oak on the property that was removed. But that condition would require that a forester go out and, or a biologist, I should say, go out and identify how many oak trees may have been removed and restore them in that area. And again, they can only restore what is on their property. We received a number of public comments on this project. The, most of those referred to concerns about the source of water and the potential hydrological connectivity of the existing well to nearby spring that provides domestic water for a number of residences in the area. And so staff does believe that that's addressed by the condition of approval number four. There's a number of concerns that were raised about noise and generator use. And again, with the, as we understand the project now and as is proposed for approval tonight, the project is light deprivation and the source, the power needs are primarily going to be for operating the water pump. And then of course, the timber conversion, which is, we just discussed regarding that oak woodland on the south side of the parcel. Regarding the noise and the generator use, I just do want to show you a picture that I took yesterday on the site. This is a concrete building that's built into the hillside. And this is where they're proposing to store the generator that would be used for emergency backup purposes only. So that is, staff is recommending that planning commission find the project consistent with the environmental impact report that was prepared for the CCLUO and to make all the required findings for approval and adopt the resolution approving the permit subject to recommended conditions of approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions of the commission for staff? Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, thank you. No, there I am, okay. You can hear me, right? Okay, so I have a question. Cliff, you mentioned regarding employees. What exactly was your wording about only family members of the LLC going to be on the premises working?
Yes, that is our understanding from the applicant is that, and they could probably speak to this a little bit more, but that there's two families really that are involved in this LLC and that those families and their family members would be the employees.
So, so my comment there is because I'm in insurance and workers comp and all of that, employees, this is a very misnomer that a lot of people mistake things on. Only the corporate members or, in this case of an LLC, the managing members are exempt from workers comp. Otherwise, family members have to be covered under workers comp and they're considered employees. So we need to have that one really answered. Thank you.
Commissioner Newman, if I could just respond real quickly. The biggest issue for employees would be from the county's perspective, that they would need to provide parking for those employees and then also an accessible restroom facility. And so if that's a concern here, I would recommend that we add a condition of approval that they develop those features.
Why, I'm going to ask a question since we're on this. Before I ask Thomas, why wouldn't we require that they have to have the right workers comp insurance in this case? We do, if you're a contractor, you have to show proof of workers comp on your employees when you take out a building permit. So why would it be any different here? Let you answer that, I guess, Cliff, because I think Mike brings up a good point.
Yeah.
If I can add there just real quick, just as an addendum there to Alan's comment. A lot of people don't realize that, so they don't start a workers comp policy. They think that they're exempt unless they're inspected. And it is, it doesn't happen all the time. So unless it comes into the radar scope of the WCIRB or any other entities that would be looking towards that, it wouldn't be known.
Would you like to tackle that one, Cliff, or Director?
I'll take a shot at it. I think what I'd like to say is while we don't regulate workers comp, I think the thing that we do here is the importance of just identifying the number of employees, even if they're family members. And we will correct that as we go forward and articulate the number of people who will be working on the site as the standard practice.
Director Thomas, you had your hand up.
So Commissioner Newman grabbed one of my bullet points. As you guys are, most of you are probably aware, I know a little bit about workers comp. But I double checked it. And the thing I'm confused about is we keep talking about LLC, but this was converted to a general stock corporation in 2019. And I see three officers basically in it. And maybe I'm reading the documents wrong. But there would, only those three people listed as officers would be exempt from workers comp or the employee rights type of thing. So I think we really need to cover that. And, and that's one of my bullet points. I heard Cliff mention a generator being used for a water pump. And maybe I misheard him, but I thought under ordinance 2.0, there is no generator use allowed for any cultivation activities. I believe that would include pumping of well water or any other water movement. Maybe I'm wrong. And another question for staff, and maybe this isn't the appropriate time. We, if you read the articles of amendment, whenever I went to a general stock corporation, there was a name of Mr. LaFell. He's one of the shareholders. And there was also a letter received from Ms. Blackberry that showed Mr. LaFell as being in charge of the RMA fees for this subject partial. I've heard complaints from citizens and community members that some of these applicants are one in the same of the activities of the conversion. And sorry to be long-winded tonight, I apologize. My last question is you showed the cultivation site near the residence. When the trespass grow, that picture, I'm just curious how 18,000 square feet is going to fit in there? Because as the pictures I provide that are in with the staff report and everything, there's water coming out of that bank. And are we going to put greenhouses over that green grass area? If you pull up the picture, when the suspected trespass grow as closest to Ross Road, you'll see a green grass area. I think I have two more, but I'm going to hold off on those right now.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts for staff now before we open this up for public comment? And hopefully we'll get to talk to the applicant as well. So seeing none, I'm going to open this up for public comment. And is 7108 the applicant? I don't know. I'd ask the applicant to wait till the end is what I'm going to say. And there's a bunch of ends going up. So we're going to start off with public 7108.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry again. I've put in a lot of red comments. I'm going to try to keep this short. The difference between the 1.0 and the 2.0 ordinance, the big changes with the water source. And it says the water source shall exclusively utilize stored water from non diversionary source. And then the energy source was changed to say, energy source, electricity must exclusively be provided by renewable energy source. With the water, they have a exception for saying trucked water shall not be allowed except for emergencies. And then it states for this provision, emergency is defined as a sudden, unexpected occurrence demanding immediate action. So with this 2.0 ordinance that must be exclusively renewable, staff has added generators for emergency backup with no accompanying definition of emergency. And generators are allowed under the 2.0 ordinance for pre-existing growth. But for new operations, it must be exclusively provided by renewable energy. The ordinance does not say mainly renewable. It says exclusively. And if you're having an emergency 20% of the time, it's definitely not an emergency. It's supplemental. So all this stuff about, you know, up to 20% of generators is in super conflict with exclusively renewable. So I am suggesting you remove the generator use until such time there is clarity within the 2.0 ordinance regarding generator use. Do they really mean must be exclusively renewable? Or did they really mean mainly with generators? The water, the well report by the driller says that the water tapped into a subsurface stream flow. And we're going to try, we're going to try, water table is going down. And we believe the water is hydrologically connected to our creeks and springs. And look forward to the findings of the applicant's qualified hydrogeologist report. If we have concerns about the hydrogeologist, we'll get a second opinion. Okay, I just want to say the oaks, I think that should abide by the timber conversion requirement. So I'm asking you to look at the white oaks, the generators and the water issues and hoping the commissioners will take into consideration and require compliance to the 2.0 ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. The next caller is Alicia Heitzman.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me speak. My name is Alicia Heitzman. I work with the National Resource Management in Eureka. We are a consulting company that this landowner has hired to take care of the water board and 1600 requirements for this permitting. And I wanted to speak to some of these issues that have been brought up. I just wanted to reassure all the concerned neighbors that Paul, the project applicant, is going to be hiring a qualified hydrogeologist to look at the well and make sure that it is indeed groundwater. And then if it's not, he will be drilling a new well that is guaranteed to be, or at least, no, after we look at the water port, will be groundwater. I want to talk about the energy. Solar is the main source. There's already one solar panel on the ground. There's, I didn't, I was on the site visit yesterday with, there was at least five solar panels on the house that once that house is taken down in phase two of this project, those will be installed on the ground to supply the energy that's needed. The generator use that's been brought up is strictly for backup. So we have, you know, I'm not a solar panel specialist, but by any means. But if for some reason the power that's stored in the solar panels is not enough to get the project owners through like a really stormy, no sun period, then that's when the generator will be used to pump the water from the well up to the tank storage. And also, the company that I work for is the one that wrote the timber conversion report. And I wanted to, again, reassure the neighbors that Paul will be complying with the timber report that we wrote. And I think that's about it. So thank you so much for my time to speak.
Thank you, Lisa. The next caller, I'm going to sweep poll till the end. So the next- So the next caller is seven four two nine. Seven four two nine, are you there? There you go.
Hi, my name is Gil Gregori. Good evening to the commissioners and all of my neighbors out there. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. It seems like the planning commissioners feel that if we put a thousand large straws into the earth in the summer, when there is very little water and suck up millions of gallons, it's just about the same as storing the water in the winter when we have plenty and then using it in the summer. You know, when I hear myself say that, it sounds quite absurd. I think we need to store the water from the winter that we're going to use in the summer. I also think that it's really a bad idea to use fuel to grow a crop that doesn't need fuel. I'd like to see the generators disappear over the next five years to be replaced with solar power. Thank you very much.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
There you go.
I was unmuted, but I could hear nothing. Hi, this is Shirley Hellman. And, um, I did write a letter last week, but it's not clear to me that it was attached, uh, in your documentation. So I am going to recap some of those points. But I am a little, um, some of the comments that have come out tonight have been interesting. I understood at the last meeting that, um, Rising Goat was changing their cycles from three to one. And now tonight it looks like it's one to two. So I don't really know what that means. Uh, and, and some clarification on that would be good. Is it one? Is it two? Is it sometimes one, sometimes two? And at the last meeting, it was clear that the total number, amount of water that would be used over the year was less based on less growing. However, I'd like you all to seriously consider that that cycle is in the driest time of the year. It's the most pressured time of the year. And it is unrealistic to think that as, as we believe that these water sources are connected, that that is going to result in a good outcome for all of us who use the water here and have used the water for years. So I would really like the commissioners to take a little more sophisticated analysis and a little more time. And very respectfully submitting that you do that and take our concerns very seriously. Um, we need to maintain our water environment and our livability here. Also, Commissioner Muldar brought up last time, at the last meeting, that sometimes it's a better idea to have two qualified hydrogeologists assess a site. I would really like to encourage that to be the case because unfortunately it's, and, and I'm not pointing any fingers at anyone. I think in general, it's too easy to find someone who underwrites your project. And that goes for any, anybody's point of view. So, um, I would like to consider that we have two qualified people look at this site. Because frankly, just drilling another well and sucking a bunch more water out of the aquifer doesn't sound like a good idea to me. I would like to seriously consider that forbearance is the only thing that's going to work. And it'll work for everyone. Yeah, you know, the grow can happen and, and we can have the water. And I'm assuming I'm coming to the end of my time, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, Alicia already spoke, so ones, uh, this last four, seven four two nine. Caller, go ahead. Seven four two nine. Just changed the chat.
Hello?
Okay. Yes.
Hi, uh, my name's Robi Tenorio, and I'm, um, calling of course about this issue of, uh, the issue of wells and generators. But I'm concerned about the work of the planning department to bring these large cultivation projects forward to your planning commission for approval that, that are relying on well water. The science is complicated on one, on one level, on some levels. But a very basic level that we can all understand, all the water at some point is connected. And we've entered a drying and drought error. There's no doubt about that science. And we need to conserve our water. We need to store water so we can forbear in the dry periods. And if Humboldt County is committed to good environmental stewardship, we shouldn't be permitting these grows that use unstored water. Nor should we be permitting the use of generators. Um, specifically, and, and this application, uh, has both of those, which many of the ones you're doing tonight do. But the ordinance two point O does require exclusively renewable. So there's a real, um, disconnect on this particular application. And I do agree with the previous, um, concerns about the oak forest. And the conversion, um, is usually of, forest conversion is usually cutting out the Douglas fir, not the white oaks. The white oaks are considered vital for California. And, um, for the applicant to feel that it's too difficult to replant does not seem, uh, like a, a very good, um, answer to the problem. So, um, please consider these concerns and thank you very much.
It looks like we are down to Paul. So go ahead, Paul. I'm assuming this is the applicant. Kent just put his hand. So, Kent, you go ahead since Paul's not picking up anyhow, and then we'll go to Paul.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Um, you know, I, I look at this project and, uh, I, I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm in, in construction, the same as some of you people are. And, and I would actually like to see maybe the people in the neighborhood go ahead. And if you're only going to have one, uh, hydrologist in there, have, have them approve that person. Uh, I hate to have to say it, but if you want to have something wet stamp, and those of us in construction know, you can go to what we call an anything for a buck chuck engineer and you can buy that wet stamp. And, uh, there's all kinds of, uh, things and problems with that. But I think that might alleviate your problem here. I, I do strongly suggest that forbearance is the solution under this circumstance. I also, uh, I wish the county staff would help educate all of us as far as the up and coming technology regarding solar and, and take a little time so that they can counsel these people. There's very large potential storage units, uh, Tesla and other people are developing as far as energy storage, which should be enough to more than, uh, take care of any bad weather circumstance or anything that would interrupt solar in any way, shape or form. So I, I really wish, wish that there would be some, some kind of a, a study. Maybe some of you would like to take that on personally and educate or else have staff, uh, become educated in that. So I think that's our future. And, and, uh, I, I really, I think this project does need to have, have a forbearance outlook because of the concerns in the neighborhood. And, uh, and hopefully you will, hopefully you will come up with some ways to mitigate that problem tonight and so everybody can move on. Good evening.
Thank you, Kent. And now I will ask the applicant, well, there's two Pauls. Okay, so Paul Jacobson first.
Oh, there, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Sue Jacobson.
Yeah.
We get it.
I have something to say also, but here we go. When the new revised plan for Rising Goat Farm, uh, came out, it was sad to see the ultimate plan has not changed much. The water use at phase three and phase seventeen of this revised plan is still at 366,660 gallons a year. This includes pumping 1,800 gallons a day out of the aquifer in the summer months. It may be months before they get a qualified hydrologist or hydrogeologist to certify that the existing well is not drawing from the subsurface stream flows. It seems unlikely to us that the report on the existing well will come out the way they hope. Its location and elevation above the creek and springs predicts it's most likely a diversion. The well driller's report clearly states that it's drawing water from subsurface stream flows. They propose to drill yet another well if the existing one is not appropriate. It will also have to be certified as non diversionary. My communications with experts lead me to believe all the groundwater is connected to the surface water in our local geology. It seems to us the practical answer would be to begin installing and filling water tanks or put in a pond. Pumping water from the aquifer during the summer months is not the answer. Drought conditions have persisted here for more than 12 years now. Most winters have been too dry to properly recharge the water table. None of the culvers in their property are running now, and it's been raining. Removing thousands of gallons of water during the months when there is no precipitation can eventually create damage to the soil structure, causing it to compact and become unable to recharge. Then the surface streams and springs are gone. It seems if the project is so large that it is difficult to store enough water for it, then the project is too big for the site. The choice is between water to support a commercial cannabis farm or protect the water table and water rights for 15 neighboring landowners' families.
Thirty seconds.
You have the power to properly implement the ordinance that is supposed to protect the environment. Please give some consideration to the families who have carefully cared for the watershed for decades in order to live happily in this wonderful place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now I will ask Paul, the applicant, to speak, please.
Great.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. There we go. All right, there was a question that came up on ownership. And the ownership is of three individuals, one of which happens to be named Mitch Leffel. He is the son of a former owner. He is not the same Mitch Leffel. And this has come up on several occasions. This is also not an LLC. This is a corporation. As far as the white oaks go, we plan to follow the timber recommendations in the timber report done by Natural Resources. Um, there's no reason not to. And yes, we will be cutting out some of the trees that are not appropriate to the site. But again, based upon their recommendations, which I believe staff also recommended. As far as the generator goes, we will barely need to use the generator. We don't have a big power need. We are not mixed light. All we're driving is fans, our fans, and a small pump to pump the water up the hill into the storage tanks. As far as the water goes, that's up to a licensed hydrologist. But as many of you has said, have said, you can buy them. I don't know anyone that I can buy who's a hydrologist. Um, and as far as agreeing on one, we're looking for someone who's licensed. Um, I don't know, what do you do with two hydrology reports if they're different? Or even slightly different? That seems a bit unfair. But I think we have addressed, Natural Resources had tried to address, and staff has tried to address all of your concerns. And I think we're there. And I hope you feel the same. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners while Paul's on the phone there with us? Mike?
LLC corporations are the same thing. Are there any family members of the corporate officers working on the premises? Will there be? Are there? Yes, the only owners are the officers.
Can't hear you, Mike.
You didn't understand what I just said. Are there any family members of the corporate officers going to be or are working on that farm?
No. No.
Thank you. Noah, I think you had a question.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, well, we have the applicant. I, I, I just want to say I, um, appreciate the improvements that have been made to this, um, project. I'm, uh, I'll, I'll wait to discuss the whole question of, of how we can find a licensed hydrogeologist that we can feel good about. But as to power use, um, I just want to be clear because I think we have heard, I, I heard things that seem a little inconsistent, although I understand the power use of this project is fairly minimal. It is important to understand whether the use of generators is to be necessary as a routine matter for either running the fans or the water pump? Or is the generator only in place as a backup should the solar system, which is normally capable of running those power demands fail for whatever reason? And then we, you know, it, it just because, uh, Alicia, I believe it was from Natural Resource Management, did specify that it was 100% solar, uh, energy needs with generators only there as a backup. And I guess we need to be clear what that means. Does backup mean every day for part of the day? Or does backup truly mean on rare occasions?
Thank you.
In answer. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Paul.
In answer to your question, hopefully, um, we have quite a few solar panels and solar system that exist. The generator would definitely be used only in an emergency or in a backup situation where we had burned out all of the power in our batteries.
Thank you for, for that. That seems clear enough.
Thomas, you have a question?
Yes, um, so I read in this, in somewhere in the staff report that the owner's family members were going to work. And then I just heard the applicant state that now the family members aren't going to work. Um, there's also something said about vehicle trips where we're only going to have three vehicles in twice per year. So I'm assuming that the applicants are going to bring all of the food and drinking supplies and supplies necessary for the cultivation activities in in one trip? And then go back out and come back in another trip? Um, I did read in the staff, read somewhere in staff report or ops plan that the, the house that's unpermitted right now is going to be removed and then rebuilt. So I'm, where employees or quote unquote owners are going to reside in the meantime to, you know, keep those vehicle trips down. And the last question, I think it goes to a solar array as far as loads. Um, I, I would think that you would have, you know, PGE always rates everything 150% a lot of times. So maybe your maximum load capabilities, you would have battery storage of 150% of what your max load capabilities would be at maybe four hours, four to six hours of 50% sunlight. And maybe that's where you get to the mathematical equation. Uh, that's just kind of where I'm at right now. I have more comments, but I'mma hold on those.
Thank you, Thomas. Sorry about that. Uh, any, Mike, I see you got your hand back up.
Well, it just brought to mind a little bit more about the residents and then people living there. If they're not just corporate officers, how are they verified to not be working on the grow? If they're spouses of corporate officers on the parcel there?
There are three single guys who are owners. No girlfriends, no children.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I still haven't closed public comment because we've been talking with the applicant. So any other questions for the applicant before I close public comment? Thomas?
So the other question I have that I'm having a hard time about information bouncing back and forth. The last hearing we had, I believe I clearly asked when it was said to change the one cultivation cycle. I clearly asked, would this be light depth in one harvest with an early harvest like some people do in impacted watersheds where they're out of the ground by August? And I do remember the applicant clearly stating it would be one cycle full term. And then since then, now it's changed to two cycles. And same thing is with the employees, there's just a lot of information that's changing on the fly. So I'm just, whatever happens, I hope we have it all in writing. And the applicant's clear. I personally don't see how we could permit the water use right now without the hydrologist. So I think the reality of cultivating this season is with state licensing fairly challenging, I think would be the proper term.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment. Oh, Peggy, go ahead.
There was a comment about what, you know, commissioners think about water and what have you. And, and I just want to make it really clear, like I ran five community water systems, three of which were run off surface water systems. And in the months of July and August, when people are relying on water for their drinking water, it's so problematic in the hills to keep those systems going. So if any of the neighbors are relying on a water system that's a surface water system and they're being impacted by someone drawing water out of the watershed or even contaminating their water, that's the other thing. Like when we would test our water systems, we had a high level of contamination in areas, like fecal contamination in areas where there shouldn't have been. And we have to take that very, very seriously. And, you know, if you, if you've never relied on a community water system like, like people are, I mean, you're literally hauling in water and worrying about whether you're going to get through. And I also worked in a community that had to rely on solar and generators. And it's very, very difficult to run solar beyond the summer months. I mean, it's impossible without good batteries to back yourself up or other alternate energy. And we're, all of these are on the honor system. Like we all act like everyone's going to be perfect and do all the things that they're going to do. And I mean, if I'm out in there and I've got my crop in the ground and I need energy, I'm going to turn that generator on. I don't, you know, you guys can catch me, I guess. But I'm not going to let my crop die. And so, you know, I think it's ridiculous for us to think that you're going to not rely on that generator more than, than people say they are. And if they're required to go by this two point O, I think that that's what we should hold our feet to that fire. I'm sorry if that's the way it is. But since I've been on this board, I've seen a lot of things go through here. And, you know, now it looks like maybe we've got more concerns than we've had in the past. But I don't know why we're not consistent. That's all I got to say. And I don't understand why we would approve any permit until we saw the hydrological report in front of us. That's what I got to say.
Peggy, anything else? All right, I don't, can't, hold on a second, Thomas. I can't remember if I closed the public hearing or not, so I'm going to now just to make sure.
I had one question.
Go ahead.
Can I ask one question of the applicant before you close that? It was just a Peggy's comment reminded me something. I apologize. So to the applicant, it's unclear to me if the applicant plans on sourcing onsite exclusive genetics and keeping genetics alive over the winter? Or they're going to source nursery genetics in the springtime and then propagate those kinds of sourced genetics? So can we have that clarified? Because that's going to greatly differ on the amount of power used.
We don't, we don't expect to be on property whatsoever after approximately the thirty-first of October of each year. And then back on property around the end of March to first of April. And we will, at that point, get nursery plants and do some of our own clones there on property. But no, we're not doing anything over winter.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Paul. So now I'm closing the public comment and take, bringing it back to the commission. So any discussion on this where we should go with it? Thoughts? Go ahead, Noah, I see your hands up. You're muted. You're muted.
My apologies. Sorry about that. Thank you. I just wanted to say, I first of all, really appreciate Commissioner O'Neill's last comment and bringing the, a mention of her experience with water systems to bear. And I too, just, just want to, I feel like I need to make a general comment that I think this applicant, some of the company, or this, this project, some of the concerns of, of commentators about this project, but also a number of other ones that do depend on wells. I mean, I, I fundamentally share the, the concern that's being expressed here. And I do realize we are stuck with what the ordinance said. But the fact that wells were, were sort of written or perceived as being a bit of the exception and that did create the exception from having to rely only on stored or rainwater catchment water for new cultivation seems to have incentivized the development of wells that might not otherwise be developed. And I would just add that I, I would think in this case, given the amount of concern that has been generated for the, by the neighborhood about the, the wells, the hydrogeologist report, that in this case at least, and perhaps in other similar cases, if we get to this point that we're, you know, approving the project with a condition of a licensed hydrogeologist determining whether there is a connection to surface waters, I would like to see the planning department, the county approve which licensed hydrogeologist is used. I mean, maybe just given that we've talked about it so much in this case, that seems appropriate. Perhaps that's appropriate in other cases too. But, you know, I think there's a lot of really conscientious, knowledgeable and not so easy to buy experts out there. And, and we as a counting department know who some of those really reputable firms are. So I think that would assure that we are getting somebody that we can rely on. I guess that's, but, but all that said, I just want to add, I do see a good faith effort to have met the demands that have been placed on this applicant. I am much less concerned about the project as it's now presented tonight than it was a couple of weeks ago. And I feel that with the conditions that we're developing, I'm prepared to support this project.
Any other comments? Let's see, Melanie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I do worry a little bit about, you know, taking a different approach for, you know, certain projects like this one that we didn't take for, for others. You know, in order to be consistent. At the same time, I do agree that this case, in this case, there are some legitimate concerns that would warrant extra attention. And I'm just wondering if the proponent could perhaps answer a question I have, which is, have they looked into the feasibility of relying on rainwater catchment alone? I know that the cycles have been reduced and, and all that. So I'm just wondering if they've looked into the feasibility of that? And as, you know, in regards to the electrical usage, it sounds like they're going to be mainly there during the time of year when the solar is most available. So that on that count, I feel fairly confident. Thank you.
So you wanted the applicant to answer that question, Melanie? And I'm afraid, I don't want to just keep going back and forth with the applicant. So I'm gonna, after all of our questions are asked, I'm going to ask the applicant to come back on so that he can answer any questions that we get. So we're not just flip flopping back and forth. So then, Mike, you, thank you, Melanie. Mike, you have a question?
Well, question, comment, question. With part of this discussion about the cycles, I want to make it clear how many there are. As it was discussed at the end of the prior, it was down to one. Now is it two or is it one? Number, that's question one. I want to make sure that that is out there and that we have that straight away. And that's part of the recommended conditions of approval. Secondly, I think the licensed hydrogeologist's choice should be from the county, who is a partial, impartial third party to choose what the hydrogeologist would be, who it would be. They would, of course, be licensed because they're putting their E N O on the line. And as Kent said before, there are ones that can be bought very easily. So I would, I would agree that it would have to be a, a third party with the county being that third party to choose a hydrogeologist. As for concern about flip flopping or doing different things, I think part of the difference is, is the one point O regulations versus the two point O. And, and I know that we will be looking at the water issue a lot more. So I just want to make sure that the planning department is looking at that as much as we can without changing any of the rules. Because it is important, especially with surface water versus groundwater aquifers as to where it is. Based on the public input, the letters, what I've heard, this has been a tight knit community. And they've been working on that because of the concerns with the wells and it being surface water. And they have had problems in the summer. And forbearance time may be in order. So that's it for me at this point.
Noah, I see your hand up. I didn't, don't know if you, if that's still up from before. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna chime in here since, Melanie, your hand, is it still up or did it come back up?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. I, playing off of Melanie's comment about consistency among the applications that we see. And we do see, there is inconsistencies from application to application, but they all have different issues. And this one, a lot of the applications are for grows that are out all by themselves someplace. But this one has neighbors. This one has impacts on the people around it. And I, I think that's what, what makes it different than, than a lot of the other grows. I know that's oversimplifying things, but it's not just this applicant's that's going to be affected by what happens here. So I, I can't see how, personally, how we could move forward on this without having, knowing about the water because it's going to affect a lot of different individuals here. I would like to see that we postpone this and do that. I know it's been postponed once, but I would have thought that we would have had something more, you know, solid on that before it came back to us. So that was my thought when we left it last time. But I think moving forward, that would be what I'd want to see. I don't like moving them down the road because we're getting bottlenecked as it is. But we want to do the job right. So that's just my two cents worth. So Thomas, I see your hand up.
Melanie's hand was up before mine.
Okay, go ahead, Melanie.
I, I didn't have my hand up. Must still be from before.
Still be from before, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Thomas.
Sorry, I just, I spoke a lot at this meeting, so I'm trying to be really, really quiet. I think you did bring a valid point about the amount of residences that have been impacted or potentially maybe impacted with this project compared to other projects I've followed before I was on the commission. I'm going to be straight up. I cannot come to finding number four without the water issue dealt with. That's where my internal compass is right now in the required findings to approve the project. I have not seen enough evidence to come to finding number four that it won't be detrimental to the community. I can't remember the exact language, I'm new. And I'm still concerned about where this eighteen thousand square feet would be. I know I asked before we went to public comment where that square footage would go in regards to the green area in the twenty sixteen trespass grow. Those are my two biggest outlying concerns, other than the third one. Where are these workers going to reside if that house comes down?
Thank you. Is there any more questions before I let the applicant come back one last time? Director, do you have a comment? No, okay. So I'm gonna, once again, go back and ask the applicant to address us. So Paul, if you come back on, and this will be the last time.
Hang on, Alicia has been trying to, she's been raising her hand. She's the consultant for National Resources or Natural Resources. And she's been trying to get through to you. She has the question, the answers in the water issues. Are you there?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was muted because the director was talking with me. Thank you. Apologize.
Okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
Did, did you hear that Alicia from Na- National Resources is trying to speak to the water issues?
All right, I will let her come on and speak. Is she a hydrogeologist? That would be the question. I'm gonna take that as a no. All right, I'm not gonna, if, if she can't answer the well question, I'm not going to open it back up. We've been flip flopping too much. I've been doing a poor job, I will say that, of running this meeting. I'm gonna take control of it.
We should have a right to respond to you.
Well, you've had plenty of opportunities to. She's not a hydrogeologist, so there's no reason to have her say that, that they are going to talk to somebody. That's what I think needs to happen is this needs to be sent back and we get those answers from a person that can do it. So.
Okay.
Is there anything else you'd like to address, Paul? Or I close it?
We were to answer some questions and that's all that I've requested. And I can't answer the water question, so Alicia can.
Okay. Go ahead, let Alicia speak.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm, I, first off, just to address Thomas's comment from earlier about where the eighteen thousand square feet are going to go. That house that's currently on the property is in phase two is going to be taken down entirely removed, not rebuilt where it is. And a large greenhouse is going to be going there, which is going to make up the remaining of the eighteen thousand square feet that's not currently shown on the property, just to clarify that. And then as far as And then, as far as, as the water goes, maybe I'm just like totally misunderstanding this, but I, I thought that one of the conditions of getting the permit was that a hydrogeologist would be talked to. And then, if the hydrogeologist, you know, qualified by the county or the state water board, whoever wants to designate the person qualified to make that call, if it's considered surface water, then a new well is drilled, a groundwater well. And then if it, if that doesn't work, then we do rainwater catchment and any of those options are completed before any cultivation is started. So that's kind of like, not really an issue, because a resolution is found before cultivation starts. I'm just confused why it's still being like, talked about so much. Maybe someone can clarify that for me, I'm sorry. That's it.
Director, would you like to tackle that?
Um, you know, I missed some of what Alicia was saying. I hate to say that, I was responding to something else. I think the, the struggle that we've got right now is the commission's asking for information that has not been provided. And that is whether or not there is a hydrogeologist to either study the well or whether or not they're willing to do rainwater catchment. They're willing to, either of those really results in a continuation of this project. To either redesign the project, to come back with a design to show rainwater catchment, or to show the scientific evidence that the well is hydrologically not connected to a subsurface flow of surface water.
Thank you, Director. I think that kind of cleared things up. That's what I was trying to get across, not so much the, the catchment and storage, but that we need more information before we can make the decision. I, I guess we could take, have a vote on this and approve it, but would if, if the, let's say after we approve it, the hydrologist says, nope, it won't work, then would the, the project not go forward?
Well, that's why in condition number four, we attempted to give three different options. Option one would be for a hydrogeologist to examine the existing well. And if it, if they found that it was hydrologically disconnected, then that would satisfy that requirement. We could modify that condition rather than, than providing a report, that the county would undertake that analysis at the expense of the applicant. Provision B in that is that if, in, in A, if the well is hydrologically connected, that a new well be dug under the direction of a hydrogeologist at a location that's not hydrologically connected, and that it be demonstrated that that new well is not hydrologically connected. If they can't do any of those, then option C would be to come back to the commission with the modification showing rainwater catchment as the water source.
I can live with that, if that, if that's how it goes. I see we have some hands back up now, again. So Thomas, go ahead. Actually, I'm gonna close the public comment.
Wait, I had a question. Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
About the cycles.
Okay. Go ahead, Paul. I apologize, Mike. I'm, Paul, go ahead and answer his question on your, the cycles.
What was your question? I, I missed it.
How many cycles?
Oh, we plan to have one cycle, and we use light depth to speed it up and get it out of there quicker.
Can I answer your question, Mike? Hey, Thomas, you have your hand up? Thomas?
So, two questions. First off, point of clarity is Alicia, the way, my understanding was she commented as a member of a public, as an employee of NRM, not representing NRM. And then her commenting again, I'm just kind of curious about that. But Commissioner Newman's com- question just now where they said there's going to, and Paul's answer of one harvest per year, that means cultivation activities should, if they use light deprivation techniques, cultivation activities should be done by, if there's only one harvest a year, by September. Am I incorrect?
No, you're totally correct. By the time we dry, we'll get out of there completely by the end of October. Packed up, gone.
I have a follow up question for staff once public comments closed.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I had a question regarding the feasibility of rainwater catchment, but it sounds like that's all being covered, you know, what the director just outlined in terms of going through the options with the well, and then that would be the third one. So I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Any other questions for the applicant before I close this for the last time? All right, I'm closing the public comment and bringing it back to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And Melanie, your hands up, but I assume that was from when you just spoke. So with that, any other questions or any thoughts on where we want to go with this? Go ahead, Mike.
Regarding the cycles, where in the report, I've been back and forth on this, is that spelled out in the executive summary with one cycle or two? And if it's two, do we need to change something in the recommendations?
Could I alter a solution that if you were interested in making a motion, that you would indicate that the resolution be modified to correct the project description to include one light deprivation cycle per year? And that all references to number of cycle be corrected to reflect one cycle per year?
Thank you, Director. That answer your question, Mike?
Yeah.
Thomas? Go ahead.
So this is to staff, one cycle per year, some cultivators may have a hard time leaving a bed fallow. Do we have staff trained in metric compliance to double check that a cultivation area is not being recultivated per different greenhouse buildings or anything like that?
Go ahead, through the chair. So we, we don't do the metric compliance that, as you know, is to state. The thing that we do is do annual inspections. And one of the things that we can do is guiding the site to be inspected late, to ensure that a new harvest cycle has not been reinitiated. If you'd like to add that, it's a condition that certainly is appropriate.
Through the, I apologize earlier, Chair Bonzio, I didn't ask staff through the chair, that's my bad as a newbie.
Don't, don't worry.
So through the chair, I think an added condition of approval, a site like this that's to reduce water usage, may actually need two inspections per year to verify that there's no more than one cultivation cycle taking place. I don't know, other than having staff trained in metric to like log in and see what areas are planted, I don't know how, how there's any way staff can verify that there's only one cultivation cycle taking place. I know staff is overburdened, though.
Okay, Noah, I see has his hand up, so we'll come back around, maybe you can put that in the form of a motion, Thomas, after we, Noah. Go ahead, Noah. You're muted. There you go. Nope.
I, I apologize, I was just trying to say I didn't mean to still have my hand up.
No.
Sorry.
We need some humor tonight. Oh, boy. All right.
Well, I, I, since I, since I did have my hand up, though, I mean, I'm, we've, we've discussed this a lot, and I am, I want to make sure that, that the concerns that have been raised by Commissioner Mulder and others are incorporated into it. I, I would be prepared to make a motion to approve this with the, with the, I just want to make sure I can capture or recall exactly what the changed condition that Director Ford stated was. It, it had to do with specifying that, that the inspection should be done at a time to ensure a single, basically specifying that the, a single cycle would be clearly described in the project description, and that the inspection of the property would be timed so as to try to assure that that's the case. For my money, that's good enough for this one. I, I hear what Thomas is saying about, it may be hard without, with the systems that we're using to absolutely ensure with only one inspection date, but, but I think that's more of a systemic issue we have to address for other projects, not just this one. For this one, I believe we have altered the conditions, I mean, we, first of all, we have condition four that clearly outlines the three steps, the three choices that apply with regard to the determination of the water source. I, I'm satisfied by that. I, I, with the one addition that we discussed that we should include in that condition, that it is a, up to the county to choose or approve the licensed hydrogeologist. And that we also had the, the suggested condition just from the, from the director a moment ago about specifying one cycle and, and an inspection timed to try to determine that. Before I make a motion, was there anything else that we've discussed that might be an additional or amended condition for this project? That, I mean, okay, if, if that seems good, then I will move that we have considered the addendum to the environmental impact report for the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, CCLUO pursuant to Section 15164 of the State Secret Guidelines, that we make all of the required findings for approval of the special permit based on evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the proposed Rise and Go Limited Project, subject to the recommended conditions as modified in this hearing.
I'll second.
We have a second, any discussion about the motion in the second? Seeing none?
I, I just have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Has that, has, has those recommendations been captured by staff for the resolution?
Getting a nod from the director.
We have those.
How about the fact that, you know, you're coming back after a delay? I would already have my hydrologist, he'd be out there working already, or at least give me a date and I'd be able to give you the name. So if you don't have a deadline to ever, you know, finish this condition, I think that needs to be included in there, because I don't know why more movement hasn't happened in that area.
Peggy, part of that, excuse me, through the chair, part of, part of condition four is they can't do anything until that is done. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
One clerk, oh, sorry, through the chair. What would be the ramifications if the applicant, if it was found that the applicant was doing more than one cycle per year for any reason in any cultivation area?
Well, given the fact that the commission has spent a great deal of time talking about this, and it is a significant consideration in this approval, that would be grounds for revocation.
Thank you. So we have a, we have a second out there. Any more discussion on this? Seeing none? I am gonna ask Laura for the question. Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Newman?
Affirmative.
O'Neil?
No.
McGaver?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion, motion carries five, one. All right, that was a long, difficult one. Thank you, everybody. All right, so that takes us to number H, which is Departmental Reports, Ad Hoc Committee on Street Improvements.
Yeah, I, I think we just wanted to give you a quick update that we do now have an agenda put together for that. And we are in the process of setting up the first series of meetings. So those of you who are on that Ad Hoc Committee will, should be getting a notice within the next few working days. And we will be moving ahead.
Is there anything that anybody wants to address the commission or the direct, questions for the director or anything before we adjourn? Seeing none? We will adjourn the meeting of March 18th, 2021, Hummel County Planning Commission. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.